Meeting of the Select Board. I am Beth Cassavan. I am the Chair, and we are going to try something a little different this evening in an effort to be more inclusive and recognizing that there may be some people who are visually impaired that are tuning into our meetings or people who may prefer to just listen to our meetings. And so to try to associate voices with board members and staff members that are here, I'm going to ask to just kind of go around and have everyone introduce themselves, starting with our Vice Chair.
Sure. Teresa Flynn, Vice Chair, and you will hear me making most of the motions.
Oh, John Samia Clark.
Michelle Conlin, Board Member.
Carlos Garcia, Board Member.
Kevin Mizikar, Town Manager.
Taylor Galusha, Communications Coordinator.
Perfect. Thank you. The first item of business is to approve the bills, payrolls, and warrants.
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. Item number two is to review an act, review an act to approve the minutes of the May 9th, 2023, May 15th, 2023, and May 16th, 2023, meetings.
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. We have a couple of announcements this evening. The first is the Memorial Day Parade, which will be held on Monday, May 29th, 2023. The parade begins at 9:30 a.m. with a welcome address at 9:20. The parade marches to the center of town for the Memorial Day Address, which will be done by Veteran and Scout Leader John Travers from the American Legion Ray Stone Post, who will be serving as the Master of Ceremonies. The parade will continue for a reedlaying ceremony at Mountain View Cemetery on Boylston Street. All veterans and active military personnel are welcome to march in the parade. The next announcement is the Climate Action Plan Survey. All In Shrewsbury is our campaign for a sustainable future, and our town government is stepping up to lead by example. Over the course of 2023, we will collect and analyze data, complete a series of community assessments, and engage our town staff and residents to complete a climate action and resiliency plan, plan for municipal operations. You can take the community survey at shrewsburyma.gov/allinshrewsbury to get involved today. The Multimodal and Transportation Studies Survey. Provide your insights to shape Shrewsbury's Town Center Area Multimodal Study. Take the survey. By soliciting input from the community, transportation planners can gather information about travel patterns, preferences, and concerns, which will help guide decisions about future transportation investments. Scan the QR code on the website. Is that where it is? Or you can visit shrewsburymultimodality.com. And then our final announcement is a recycling event with Green Team Junk Removal scheduled for June 11th. Please join us for a recycling event with Green Team Junk Removal, June 11th, 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. at 100 Maple Avenue, Council on Aging Parking Lot. And more information can be found on the town's website at shrewsburyma.gov and on the trash and recycling webpage. And I know that I got information about it sent to my email because I sign up for Civic Alerts, and the prices are really competitive. Does anybody know, is this, like, is the town somehow supporting this to make the prices to residents less? Like, does this come from our, like, materials? What is that, the Sustainable Materials Grant? Or, you know, sometimes we can, you know, offset the cost of recycling difficult items.
We only do that for hazardous materials, so not, not this.
Okay. Yeah, really good prices. Mm-hmm. Like $20 for a carload, so take advantage. All right, I'll turn it over to you for the Town Manager's Report.
Great. So one item this evening. So after nearly a two-month-long recruitment process, I'm very excited to announce that we have reached an agreement with Keith Baldinger to be the next Assistant Town Manager. So Keith brings a lot of service in municipal government, Department of Public Works Operations, and private sector work with him into this position. And he's had two stints with the town, most recently in DPW leadership, and then in prior in DPW fieldwork with the town, and has also worked for the Town of Concord. So the process was rather extensive. We received over 60 applicants and held several rounds of interviews prior to making the decision. That included a panel round and screening round, so really happy to have this outcome. It was certainly close to home in the final decision, and that's a great thing to be able to have Keith continue and expand his role with the town. So he'll be joining our meetings and included in the executive leadership team and supporting the board as well. So congratulations to Keith.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I'd like to just thank Select Board Member Samia and Conlin for sitting in on those interviews. Congratulations. And if I can just back up, I'm pretty sure you had an announcement.
I would have worked with the next one.
Steamrolled over you.
No, it would have been work with the next item on, on public comment. So as we talked about last meeting about establishing office hours, we started to do that before COVID. Started to get some visitors in, and then once COVID came, obviously, that stopped a lot of breaks on those types of meetings. So as we announced in the last meeting, we're going to start our maiden voyage here of having an initial office hour at 5:30 to 6:30 on the first Tuesday, sorry, our first Tuesday meeting of every month, which would be the second Tuesday of the month. So our first office hour will be on June 13th, 5:30, Conference Room A across the hall. We expect to have other office hours, but we'll follow that up with a survey to get community feedback regarding what times work for members of our community, and we'll add accordingly. So hope to see residents. Provides another opportunity besides public comment, which you'll talk about shortly as part of the agenda, but also an informal setting to give us feedback as well. So we hope to see residents, and we invite you to come at 5:30 on Tuesday, June 13th. Thank you.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much for working to set that up. And then I think just to note for the public, you would expect to see two board members maximum.
Yep.
It's not going to be the full board at every office hour, and we're just going to find a way to rotate through.
Yep.
That'd be great. Yeah, I'm looking forward to that. Item number five is public comment pursuant to Select Board Policy 31 to offer citizens the opportunity to provide public comments during the Select Board meetings on matters within the board's authority, but no one has signed up. And that's really been our experience, is that no one signs up. So hopefully, within office hours, we might have a little bit more success with engaging with the public prior to our meetings. All right. Item number six is a continued public hearing from 7:05 p.m. on April 11th, 2023, and 7:05 p.m. on April 25th, 2023, with Taylor Wolf, Carnivore Cooking LLC, DBA Arrow Race Bistro, Six Hartford Turnpike regarding their application for a common victuals license. And I have been informed that they've asked to continue to the June 13th meeting, and so we will grant that continuance and hopefully see them on June 13th. Item number seven is to review the May 15th and 16th Annual Town Meeting. I would just like to start by thanking the town staff, especially under your leadership, Mr. Mizikar, for the intense amount of preparation that went into making the meeting run as well as it did. I know personally, I was really just pleased to see all of our department heads sitting, like, pre-COVID times. Like, it really felt like, you know, felt like town meetings used to feel before we had to do so much to ensure public health and safety. So thank you for all the efforts. I know you do, you pre-record every article, bring in the people, the department heads who are associated with each article, and that goes out on Shrewsbury Media Connection in advance of the meeting. I know you did a podcast on the warrant articles, and so lots of opportunities for town meeting members and the general public to kind of get comfortable with the warrant before town meeting actually takes place. So I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. Thank you. So, yeah, our, our focus was, and thank you for that recognition. We spent a lot of time with the leadership team, making sure that we were well-prepared for the meeting. We didn't meet our own expectations in the fall of 2022 at the special town meeting, so that was a good reminder that we had to dig a little deeper. So I felt that we did that. There are some few specific warrant articles that we think were different and in some ways transformational on, on how we provide operations, especially within some of our utility accounts, where we, we did a general borrowing for, asked town meeting for approval to do a general borrowing for water system improvements. That was the first time that we took that approach, and I was happy that we were able to achieve that. I think we struck the, the, an appropriate ground, and I'm sorry for any confusion that there was at the town meeting associated with Articles 32 and 33 when it came to the, to the cemetery approval. We are, thought we took the first part, which was the dedication of $4.3 million first and allowed town meeting to consider that, and then ratify the use of the property thereafter, and, and there was a little confusion for that. So I'm very pleased, you know, there were 53 warrant articles and, and one citizen's petition associated with it. And, you know, we had the town meeting support, I feel like overwhelming support on the approval of those articles. So for all the work that we put in, we're, we're happy that we were able to, to get the information to town meeting and, and have them make those decisions. So we appreciate the board's support in getting through the process. And we're always looking to make improvements, and some town meeting members have reached out to us already and made some suggestions. I think we can do some more visual enhancements at town meeting and how we use the equipment. And, you know, maybe Oak isn't the best venue for that. You know, we have other auditoriums within the community that may set itself up a little better for that, so that's a conversation that we'll continue to have as we move forward to the fall and then, of course, next spring. So appreciate the opportunity.
Anybody else have any comments on town meeting before we move on? All right. Great. Thank you. Item number eight is to review an act on the 1 through 7 Maple Avenue Second Amendment to the Land Disposition Agreement. This is sort of a housekeeping item. I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Mizikar, for a little bit of a background on this.
Sure. So there's a couple key changes that are being proposed, and this is all really catching up, honestly, with the iterative public process that occurred through the planning board. So the primary changes that we see being required now are adjusting the land disposition agreement to reflect the physical aspects of the development that were adjusted during the planning board process, two parts. One is reducing the total number of units from 55 to 53. The land disposition agreement in its current iteration required the, or had the development of 55 units, and then increasing the retained parcel. So the planning board's approval or the plan set forth by the planning board, which they approved, would provide .78 acres of land as a retained parcel, and the current agreement is .7. We've adjusted that language to say not less than .7. Just in, we wanted to provide a little bit of flexibility there. There had been some resident comments appropriately about how close the structure may end up actually being to the World War II Memorial, which is important to, World War I, excuse me, Memorial, which is important to all of us. So we, we want to have a little bit of flexibility without coming back to this board to set the building back a little bit, and that may mean the retained parcel is a little less than .78, but it will in no instance be less than 7 tenths of an acre. And then we had some dates to adjust. The planning board process took about four months longer than we anticipated, but that was all appropriate debate and changes, and the project evolved. So ultimately, we'd like to make that compensatory adjustment for the various next steps the developer would have to take. So the developer needs to secure financing and, you know, prepare the site and, you know, begin work. So the current end date, as the agreement reads right now, would require construction to start in July, no later than July of 2024. And as drafted, the agreement would extend that through November of 2024. So we're seeking the board's authorization to make those amendments to the document itself. I do think it would prudent for the board to consider allowing some flexibility as we finalize this document. Perhaps putting a cap, so allow me to continue to negotiate with the developer to say that the start of construction should be no later than November of 2024 versus giving them that absolute right. I think there's a little bit more room for negotiation there. And then just some administrative typo, ticking and tying the document back to the original. If we could have that flexibility along with the advice of council, I think that would get us to find a land disposition agreement for this project that's in the best interest of the town. So that's all laid out in the two pages associated that's, that's in your folder for this evening, but we're really just, again, updating the physical aspects of the development where they were in conflict and then altering the dates, given the extended timeline it was at planning board.
Thank you. Any questions? So I, I agree that, you know, being able to correct typographical errors or usage of language is really something that can be taken care of without coming back to the board. But if there is, like, any, like, the change, any other changes, you would make sure that we were all aware.
Oh, 100%. Yep.
Great. Perfect.
Yeah, we will negotiate the agreement to, within the parameters that you see it or more favorable to the town.
Okay. Perfect. So there is a motion in the packet updated.
Sure. Motion to approve the Second Amendment to the Land Disposition Agreement for 1 through 7, excuse me, Maple Avenue, authorizing the town manager with advice of Town Council to make all necessary administrative changes and negotiate a timeframe not to exceed a construction start date of November 30th, 2024, with all applicable contingencies.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. Item number nine is to review an act on a petition to the General Court to grant abatement of real estate taxes for the daughter of fallen firefighter Christopher Roy in accordance with Article 4 of the May 15th, 2023 Annual Town Meeting. And just by way of background, this is special legislation that needs to be filed at the state level in order to abate the property taxes for the domicile of Ava Roy, because in the state of Massachusetts, you cannot own property if you're under the age of 18. And, you know, this, Ava lives with her grandparents in town, and this would provide them with relief from taxes while they're caring for Ava. And I think that this is more than appropriate, and I was really happy to see that town meeting voted favorably. I know that Ava's grandparents were in the back of the auditorium during town meeting, and I saw an email come through immediately following the vote with just how, just overwhelmed with gratitude they were by the way that the community really embraced this, this special legislation. And I know that Representative Kane and Senator Moore will take care of it at the state level once we vote on this this evening.
And if I recall, that was a unanimous vote?
I think it was.
It was unanimous.
All right. So if there's no further discussion?
Make a motion to petition the General Court of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to grant the abatement of real estate taxes for the daughter of fallen fighter fire, firefighter Christopher Roy in accordance with town meeting's unanimous approval of Article 4 of the May 15th, 2023 warrant.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. Item number 10 is to review an act to approve the MSBA Accelerated Repair Program Project Funding Agreement for the Oak Middle School Window Replacement Project and authorize the town manager to any actions and execute all documents on behalf of the board for this project. And this will basically execute the formal funding agreement between the town and the MSBA for the Oak Middle School Window Replacement Project, which, if it sounds repetitive, it's because it was at last year's town meeting, and, and then the estimates for the cost of the project were significantly greater. No surprise considering material costs have increased so much over the past year or so. So we went back to town meeting, received approval. Again, we need to be able to show the MSBA that we can fund the full cost of the project in order for them to take us on and reimburse us for 52.26% of eligible costs. So it will actually be very favorable for us. Any comments or questions on this? Take a motion.
Motion to approve the MSBA Accelerated Repair Program Project Funding Agreement for the Oak Middle School Window Replacement Project and authorize the town manager to execute all documents and make final decisions related to the project.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. Item number 11 is to review an act to appoint a designee to the MBTA Advisory Board. This would be replacing Kristin Los, who was our designee in the past. And the suggested replacement is Christopher McGoldrick, Director of Planning and Economic Development. Questions?
Is there, um, I was just curious what the role is on the MBTA Advisory Board? Like, what, is this, is this relative to the MBTA communities? Is there any?
It's the, it's the broad, general, all aspects of the MATA, the, you know, the, all forms of MBTA transportation. So it's more than just the zoning. It is the, our representation because we're an adjacent community, but not in the sense of the zoning itself. Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? Let's take a motion.
Motion to appoint Christopher McGoldrick, Director of Planning and Economic Development, as a designee to the MBTA Advisory Board.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. Item number 12 is to review an act to appoint a designee to the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. It has been a while since we've had someone from our board appointed. Central Mass Regional Planning Commission provides a great deal of support to the community and to communities within our region. I have served as a designee prior. There are four quarterly meetings, and then there's, you know, that you should attend, but then there's several other meetings that you might want to attend, and any board member can attend, based on any special interests that you might have. I think I just saw one come across on affordable housing that looked interesting. And, you know, they, they really do provide a lot of support for our community. So I don't know if anyone is interested in taking on this role.
I would be interested in, in participating. Do you have details, there wasn't anything in our packets here that, do you have details on, you know, the timing of the meetings? Are they in person? Are they virtual?
So all I recall just from seeing is that they're hybrid, and I think really right now for this year, the only meeting is the June final meeting, and it's a dinner and awards night.
Okay.
Which we attended last year.
Yep.
So, I mean, you can totally go to that if you'd like, but the real work would start again. I think their first quarterly meeting is in September.
Yep.
Okay.
They are quarterly.
So we'll be able to figure it out by then, you know, whether or not they're hybrid or in person.
Okay.
I'm not sure where.
Do you know if they're back to fully in person? I think they've been hybrid.
I believe they're still hybrid.
And I do, I do know they're 7:00 to 8:30 at night, and they start with their business portion of the meeting, and then there's the program portion of the meeting. So every meeting will have, like, a topic.
Okay.
Related to it.
Yeah. I would be interested in participating. I don't know if anybody else is, but I'd be happy to take that on.
Perfect. That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Motion to appoint Select Board Member Michelle Conlin as a designee to the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. Thank you so much for taking on the responsibility for that. I know we also need to have an alternate. Maybe we can talk about how to best.
Yeah, because last time that we had members appointed, they were community members, so residents, not just board members. So we could always go back out and re-advertise the alternate position if that is what the board would like us to do.
I don't think we had much success in finding some interest.
No.
Which was the problem.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we can maybe talk about it and figure out the best path forward to make sure that we are well-covered because the alternate, obviously, if you can't attend a meeting, attends a meeting and can bring back the information to the town. Thank you.
Be the alternate as long as you don't miss any meetings.
All right. Item number 13 is to review an act to appoint one member of the Retirement Board to fill a vacant term set to expire on June 30th, 2024. And we did receive two letters of interest, one from John Segelnik of 25 Lexington Road and a second from Michael R. Hale of 8 Wesley and Terrace. And just for the public who might be watching, our appointment process has been clumsy in the past, and so in an attempt to try to make it less so, but also maintain transparency, I've asked that Taylor send out, or someone from the Town Manager Board, Select Board Office, send out us a form, a voting form, prior to any appointments. And each board member would have the opportunity to vote. You know, according to open meeting law, we are not able to discuss with one another who we might favor for an appointment, and we take that very seriously. I don't have access to anybody else's votes until just before the meeting, when Taylor or whoever is monitoring that spreadsheet will share it with me, just so that I'm prepared to, you know, for the meeting, and I understand sort of what the lay of the land looks like going into the meeting. And the hope here is that we balance transparency, but that we also honor the fact that these are residents in many cases applying for what is a volunteer position within our community, and that the people that apply are extremely well-qualified in doing so because they want to do what's best for the community and they want to serve. And so I really think that it's important to, you know, recognize that everyone is qualified and that everyone comes with a different set of talents and that they're willing to share their time. And I don't think that there's any value in debating the merits of one person over another in a public meeting like this. I think that would actually end up deterring people from wanting to apply for these appointed positions. So that's how we're going to try it this year, even if it's just an appointment with two people, and we'll see how it goes. And of course, we can make tweaks along the way if we find that the process isn't working for us. All right. So everyone should now have in their materials for this evening, based on the two, who was, who will be appointed, so that the motion can be made. Is that true? No.
I don't see it.
Okay. That's okay. This is the first time, so I'm happy to, I'll just go ahead and say it. So we're going to be appointing Michael Hale to this position, and I would like to thank both of, both Michael Hale and John Segelnik for putting forth their names and expressing interest. Both candidates did receive a certain number of votes, but Michael Hale did receive more votes, and so I will look for a motion to appoint Michael Hale.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. Item number 14 is to review an act on the one-day beer and wine alcohol license for Nancy Hughes St. Mary's Parish, 16 Gates Road, for Taste of Nations event on June 10th, 2023, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. Item number 15 is to review an act on the road closure request from Guinevere Molina, 31 Wachusett Avenue, for a neighborhood block party on June 10th, 2023, from 1:30 p.m. to 7 o'clock p.m. for Wachusett Avenue from Bryant Avenue to Longfellow Road with a rain date of June 11th, 2023.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted.
Does this mean we get to go?
I don't know. I didn't see anything come across our calendar, but I know they do this every year, and I imagine it gets better with time.
Yeah, they have, I know, I have some friends in the neighborhood, and, and they, it's something that they've been doing for a bunch of years, and it's really fun. They haven't had any issues with the road closure, and they're able to, you know, traffic is routed just around it, and I think it's a really big neighborhood, but it, there's a big turnout, and everybody has a good time, so.
It's a nice tradition.
Yeah, yeah. It sounds like it's a lot of fun.
Item number 16 is to review an act on the one-day all-alcohol license application of Musa Chamon, St. Mary's Syriac Orthodox Church, 1 Industrial Drive, for a wedding on Saturday, June 3rd, 2023, from 7:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m.
Move approval.
Just a thing.
Yeah.
Just, oh, that says June 13th. It looks like.
No, it's June, June 3rd.
It's like, no, no, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the insurance.
Oh, oh, oh.
But I thought it's a, second. We're good.
No, I'm glad you're checking. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So voted. All right. Then that brings us to correspondence. So item number 17 is a letter received May 7th, 2023, from Dan Lambie, Arbor Day Foundation Chief Executive, regarding 2022 Tree City USA. And basically, this letter is congratulating Shrewsbury on earning the recognition as a 2022 Tree City USA community. And that means that we make planting and caring for trees a priority, which is really nice to hear. Item number 18 is an email dated May 7th, 2023, from Melissa Smith, FEMA USGS Risk Map Project Team, regarding the revised preliminary EAP to the town of Shrewsbury in Worcester, Massachusetts. And I believe that just means the flood map.
Mm-hmm.
Item number 19 is an email dated May 8th, 2023, from Melody Singh, Shrewsbury Montessori School, Board Member, regarding the Shrewsbury Montessori School 50th Anniversary. I was able to attend. It was, I think, I don't know, two Saturdays ago or one. It was a lovely event. So for people who don't know, the Montessori School has reimagined the Mount Olivet Church, which is on, right across from Prospect Park and Prospect Street. They've done such a nice job inside. It's all remodeled, and the spaces are beautiful. The classrooms are really bright and, and airy and light-filled, and they have a huge multipurpose room, and the floor is that rubbery material so that they can put up, like, climbing structures for kids. And, yeah, it was a really fun event, and I enjoyed being able to go. I had a laugh because a little girl ran up to me and she said, you know, would you like to buy raffle tickets? And I had a park over by the congregational church, so all I took with me was, like, my key and my, like, I had nothing else. And I was like, I have nothing. I have no money. And she's like, no problem. I take Venmo. She had to. All right, then. I will Venmo you right away.
I'm glad you were able to go. I wasn't able to attend. I love to attend things like that, and I wasn't able, so.
Well, bring cash.
Yeah.
It's a takeaway.
That's adorable. Did you win anything?
I won nothing. That was not the point. I was like, all right. Item number 20 is an email dated May 10th, 2023, from Sanam H. Zaire, 8 Jamie Lane, regarding DEI Follow-Up. from Sanam H. Zaire, Eight Jamie Lane, regarding DEI follow-up. Um, Sanam reached out and asked if we could provide an update about which specific DEI task force recommendations have been implemented and which ones were still in process. And so I did get back to her just, um, to let her know that once town meeting was behind us, that I had asked the manager to please check in with departments on, you know, under our jurisdiction, right? So, we're not talking about the school department or the Shrewsbury Housing Authority, um, but departments that sort of fall under the town hall umbrella and find out how we are doing with that. I think that's a really great idea. So, we'll be able to report back out on that, hopefully, in June.
Mm-hmm.
Perfect. Um, item number twenty-one is an email dated May tenth, twenty twenty-three,